Good evening, Mars community. We're excited to welcome you to the 2021 Mars School Board Candidate Debate.
I'm Lauren Nico.
And I'm Max Olitch.
And we are here representing the Mars Enrichment Club as president and vice president. Max and I, along with a handful of other members from the club, are the ones responsible for everything you see here tonight. The Mars High School Enrichment Club is an extension of the Gifted Education Program. We are a collection of students who are academically driven and represent the community in various academic competitions and events.
As you may have seen, Armstrong is here tonight recording the event for us. It will air on the Neighborhood Channel, Channel 100, over the next couple of weeks prior to Election Day, and be uploaded to their YouTube channel the next week. We would like to thank them for helping us reach all community members by recording and televising this event.
We have received hundreds of questions from the community and would like to thank you all for your eager involvement in this event. Unfortunately, we only have time for so many questions and have done our best to fill to the most possible, most popular themes and concerns. All candidates will be asked every question and be given a time limit. We have predetermined the questions and the candidates have not been given them in advance.
We understand that having five candidates answer the same question could result in some redundancy, which is why we are allowing candidates to pass on certain questions. We are encouraging this if candidates have nothing to add to what has already been said, as it will give us more time to ask more questions to the candidates.
Before we begin tonight, we would like to ask that members of the audience keep their comments to themselves. The intention of this event is to better the community's knowledge of the candidates, and therefore, we ask that the audience remain quiet so that all can hear the candidates' responses. We are hoping that this is an informative event that allows community members to make informed decisions on Election Day.
Now, without further ado, we will begin the opening question of the night. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to introduce themselves and explain what has incentivized them to run for position on school board. This is the only question that the candidates have been given in advance. Ms. Decuccio, you will be the first to respond and have 90 seconds. Your timer starts now.
Can you guys hear me? That's really good. My name is Jen Decuccio. As some of you may know, I recently was the executive director of the Butler County Humane Society, so thank you if you supported me there. I grew up in a small town in Ohio. What brought me to Butler County was my husband, actually. I met him when I was working with GE Healthcare after I got out of the Air Force. I spent 10 years in the military. Once I got out, I started a career with GE Healthcare where I traveled all over the United States, helping customers implement their EMR systems. From there, I stayed home with my daughter. My husband and I adopted her, so when she was two, I decided to stay home for a short period of time and then joined the Board of Directors for the Humane Society. From there, I stepped down to be the executive director because they really needed a lot of help, so I spent the last three and a half years there trying to restore their mission. So I feel like my past experiences allow me to help with the school board, the decisions and the policies that need to be implemented. Thank you.
Amazing. Thank you so much. Mr. Miller, you're up next, and your timer starts now as well.
Hello, my name's Justin Miller. Thank you all for having me here tonight. I'm excited to be a candidate for the school board. My hope is to do the very best I can in order to make Mars the very best it can be. I will follow some great people leaving the board. I want to, I want everyone here to know just who I am. I'm a husband of 17 years. I have two great daughters. One is in 10th grade. She loves horses, hunting, and automotive collision class at VOTEC she takes. The other is in 7th grade. She loves horses, basketball, and everything about school. I'm an entrepreneur. I started my business 15 and a half years ago, and I have been able to make it thrive. I live in the, I have lived in the district for 18 years, and my wife's family has been here since 1925. My roots run deep throughout the community. I'm not running to further a personal polit, personal or political agenda. I simply want to try and better the community for everyone. I'm a lifelong Republican with conservative views. I'm a proud American, and I am God-fearing. I believe masks should be a choice, and I surely don't believe in mandates. I believe in a free society where individuals and parents have the right to decide what is best for ourselves and family. I believe we pay enough taxes and the burden weighs heavy on us all. I believe in accountability and responsibility of our own actions, and I believe I'm not alone in my beliefs. Our children deserve the best education we can provide for them, so they have every opportunity to become successful adults. Instead of complaining, I have decided to act. I'm very grateful for this opportunity, and stated before, I'll do my best for you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Miller. Ms. Reiner, I believe you're next, and your timer starts now.
My name is Leanne Reiner. First, I'd like to thank the Mars Student Enrichment Club for hosting this event. I am running for a seat on the Mars School Board because I have a vested interest in the future of this district. As a mother of two children in the district and an active PTO member for over five years, I understand Mars' strengths and weaknesses. One of the biggest challenges that Mars is facing today is the ability to provide quality education for all students while we prepare for the explosive growth in our community. I will bring a level of transparency to the board that my fellow taxpayers will appreciate, and I will bring a level of collaboration that will bring this community together. As a candidate, my focus five priorities are quality education, accountability, fiscal responsibility, preparing for growth, and community collaboration. I would like to thank my fellow candidates and all of you for coming out tonight, and I'm excited and prepared to answer any questions that you have prepared. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Reiner. I believe Ms. Stubber, you're up next.
Okay, great.
And your timer starts now.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Jen Stubber, and I wanted to start off by thanking the Enrichment Club for this opportunity tonight, and I look forward to the questions that we are about to face. With much of my family from Mars for as long as I can count, probably, it has been my goal to raise my family in the community of a small town and friends on every corner. However, we can't continue to have this community feeling until we realize the importance of focusing on our children's education. Making sure that the education is, excuse me, a quality environment for all of the students and making sure that, oh, I'm sorry, students, they cannot continue without bringing that quality education to our students. We, in order to have that quality for our students, we have to value our tax dollars and our children's education equally. Without equal education, we will not have that opportunity to continue being a blue-ribbon school. I believe that a school board should have integrity and respect for all, and if I am for, when I am fortunate enough to be elected, I intend to be a voice for all of the community, no matter what their background is or their political beliefs. Thank you.
Alrighty, thank you, Ms. Stubber. Ms. Thurner, I believe you're next.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name's Nicole Turner. I am an Adams Township resident, and I've been a resident here since 2017. In my professional life, I am an attorney. I practice primarily in family law, which includes custody cases, divorce, adoptions. I work a lot with children and youth services, and I am also a child advocate for a lot of what I do in my profession. Outside of my profession, I get involved highly in the Butler County community as a whole. I'm vice president of ServeOptimist International of Butler County. I'm vice chair of the Drug and Alcohol Council. I'm a member of Butler AM Rotary. I'm involved in the Butler Downtown Organization, and I coach, I'm the head coach for the middle school girls over at NOC School District. So, living in the Mars area, I really wanted to find something where my skill set and my passion for working with children would be beneficial where I live. To me, the school board made the most sense. I think I bring a unique skill set to the board. I understand the laws that are applicable to the issues that are presented to the board. I understand dispute resolution. I had a training in that. That's what I specialized in when I was in law school. So I think I can bring that reasonableness and that collaboration to the board. I would really appreciate your consideration for vote on November 2nd. Thank you.
Alright, thank you guys very much. So for our first question, Mr. Miller, we're going to start with you this time. How do you plan to bring our district together after years of division? You will have 90 seconds to answer this question each. If you guys need a repeat on the question, please just let us know. Mr. Miller, your timer starts now.
Could you please repeat the question? Thank you.
It was hard to hear.
Yes. How do you plan to bring our district together after years of division? 90 seconds.
Thank you. So the question was how to bring the school district together?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, alright. Thank you.
Oh, no problem.
Bring the school district together, the, we all need to come to the same, on the same page, which is going to be impossible. Everybody's different one way or the other. The best thing we can do is to come to a middle ground and, and find what we can all agree on. What that may be, I don't know. Without a specific thing to be able to, to speak about, just as a broad generalization to bring this, bring the school district together, I think we all, we all can get there. Everybody can, can get there. We have to, and as a country as a whole, we all need to come together, because a school district, a country divided, is going to fail. I don't have the answer on how to bring everybody together, but I'm willing to try. I'm willing to work with people, and I'm willing to, to do whatever it takes to bring us together to make it, this the best community we can, we can have. You know, it, it just takes everybody cooperating in an open mind. You gotta have an open mind. You know, you may not like what I say, she may not like what you say. We gotta come together and, and, and just be human, be civil, be adults, and, and come together. It's important, we have to.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Ms. Reiner, you're next.
Yes. So to bring this community together, the Mars School District, as far as within the school district, I'm very active in the three elementary schools. We do many programs together. The principals work together. As far as the middle school and high school, they're on almost like a separate level. I think to bring this community together, we need more transparency. We need better effective communication throughout the district, throughout the staff, administration, superintendent, and board. We need more respect and to train the teachers, to recruit and, and retain the teachers, and make this an experience for the children where it's not just school. Have fun events, community events, as much as we can during the pandemic, safely, of course, but I feel like what's lacking is a sense of community within a whole. So ways that we can do that, like I said, are effective communication, transparency, maybe answering those difficult budget questions that a lot of parents want to know what is happening, where is this money going, what are we doing with that, where is our district going in the next five years? If we can communicate that, then we can all work together.
Thank you very much, Ms. Reiner. Ms. Stubber, you're up next. You have 90 seconds.
Okay. In order to bring the community together, I do believe that we need to work as a, as a team, the community and the school, the community, the school, the board, all as a team. We need to value each other's opinions and hear each other's voices. We need to focus on our strengths and weaknesses as a district and how to continue improve, to improve those. We need to realize that everyone has an opinion and are entitled to that opinion, and that opinions shouldn't be the same across the board. And I agree with Leanne. I think that transparency is definitely something that needs to change for this district. We need to give those teachers also an opportunity to continue being lifelong learners and incentive to be those lifelong learners, because education is not going to improve if the educators are stuck in the same cycle.
Thank you very much, Ms. Stubber. Ms. Turner, you are next.
Thank you. So it, it seems to me, and this is obvious, and it's a nationwide issue, I think, in small communities, but politics are the reason why a lot of the division is occurring and that wedge continues to grow. There's a reason why school board races are nonpartisan. It's naive to think that there, it's an atypical position, but the conflict that continues to exist and continues to grow stunts productivity with the board. So it's really important for the board, for the community as a whole, to understand that you may have a political stance on an issue, but the board really needs to get back to the basics of what the board is there for. They're there to help implement policies for education, make sure we have the best education we can have for the students in our, in our district, and we look at the budget and we set the budget, and that's what the board really needs to concentrate on. There are laws in place for a reason, and the board cannot deviate from those laws that exist. So the debates and the issues that continue to be raised when the board has absolutely no way of changing what exists currently from our government is just a waste of time and, again, stunts productivity. So we have to find out a way to have that transparency and to build back that respect and the trust from the community for the board to be able to function.
Alright. Thank you very much, Ms. Thurner. Ms. Decuccio, this is the last one for this question.
So for me, it starts with transparency, just like what Leanne had mentioned. I, I feel that, you know, tax, every dollar that, you know, is given from our taxpayers is a dollar from our hard-working community members. You know, it's important, they, community members who pay taxes deserve to have their, you know, opinions heard, and I think that, you know, there needs to be a level of respect when we hear them. We may not agree with them, and, and I think the last thing really is, is just put social media down. I feel like it's such a negative thing, a negative place to be at, and I feel like it causes so much division. I hate it. I, I see it in our youth every day, in the division that it causes in our youth, so it's pretty simple things.
Oh, thank you very much, Ms. Decuccio. So now on to our second question, and we're going to start with Ms. Reiner. Alright, Ms. Reiner, do you feel that our arts, music, and foreign language programs are up to par with neighboring school districts? When do you feel programs like band, chorus, and other foreign languages should be introduced?
You have one minute to respond, and your time starts now.
Would, would you like to repeat?
The last.
Yep.
Of course.
The last part of the question.
Uh, when do you feel like programs like band, chorus, and foreign languages should be introduced to our students?
Introduced? Oh, okay. Gotcha. So, if any of you have any younger children, the, the recorder is introduced at the elementary level, and that is fantastic. So, it's very enjoyable to see your child pretend like he's Kenny G and play the instrument. I have a daughter who's in sixth grade and plays the clarinet and has now taken on the viola. We have a fantastic band program with Mrs. Redman, and, starting in the fifth grade. I see where, okay, band can start in the fifth grade. Foreign language is big with me. We, we start way too late in education here at Mars. Just a little background, before we moved here, my son actually took French in preschool. So then when we moved here and I found out that foreign languages weren't started until high school, it was really disappointing. I think we need to support our programs much more than we do. Thanks.
Alrighty, thank you, Ms. Reiner. Ms. Stubber, you are next.
I have a fourth grader. Unfortunately, recorder is not part of the curriculum this year, which is disappointing. We are fortunate enough to have outside lessons, but I do think that giving that opportunity to instill music as young as possible is a great opportunity, because it really makes your child a rounded, well-rounded child. I think that foreign languages, it's kind of disheartening to hear that they don't start until high school. I was fortunate enough to go to a district where we were able to, I believe in seventh grade, try Latin, French, German, and Spanish, so you can decide what is that, and even start in eighth grade. I mean, there are many people that use that for their career, so I definitely think that we have a little room for improvement, to do it a little earlier and really help those kids become well-rounded.
Alrighty, thank you, Ms. Stubber. Ms. Turner, you may begin.
Thank you. I do believe that it should start at a young age, elementary school. I do remember whenever I was growing up, I started playing saxophone in fourth grade. I started playing piano in second grade. I still play those, and it's a tremendous outlet, and in addition to that, I learned how to play guitar. I picked that up by myself because I had those, those skills and that knowledge at a young age that was easy to develop throughout the years as I got older. Likewise with foreign language, I really wish that I would have had that opportunity at a younger age when I was growing up, because right now, in the legal profession, it's really, it's few and far between attorneys that are bilingual, and I, I'm trying to teach myself now at this point a second language, and it's, it's difficult. So the earlier you can start teaching these things and these skills, and like I said, music became an outlet for me, I think it's really important, so the earlier the better.
Alright. Thank you very much. Ms. Decuccio, you are up next.
So I, I believe that the foreign language should definitely start sooner. I, I, if I am correct, it's ninth grade right now, if somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but I would really love to see it at seventh grade, starting, and music, you know, we've paid out of pocket to have my daughter take piano lessons. She's a very shy introvert, and I, it really brings her out of her shell, so I feel like, you know, music is so important for certain, for certain kids, especially children like my daughter, so definitely, and we also need to support these programs. It's not just about when should they start, it's about the funding for them, too.
Alright. Thank you very much. Mr. Miller.
I think we all, all can agree that all the specials, the earlier they start, the better off the children are going to have. They have more time to figure out what they're gonna enjoy to do. There is so many hours in the day to teach what they need to be taught. I can remember when I was in third grade, we started a band. I started playing saxophone in third grade. Foreign language was in seventh grade, so it's a little, it was a little bit earlier than what Mars is. So maybe if we can't fit it in the curriculum throughout the day that early, maybe if there could be an after-school program or, or something, you know, along those kind of lines, maybe that would, that would work, you know, for somebody that wants a kindergarten or to learn how to play saxophone, maybe half an hour class after, after school or something. I don't know, but I think we can all agree that earlier would be better for them. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for your response, Mr. Miller. The third question is as follows. We've seen more disruption in classrooms due to lack of subs and paraprofessionals. We already sit at the fifth lowest in the state in terms of money spent per student in a district named one of the wealthiest in Western Pennsylvania.
There seems to be a sizable disconnect between the rising expenses and what the district is bringing in. How do you plan on dealing with the continuing budget deficit to attract and retain talent while maintaining successful learning within the student body?
I think the budget deficit, the important piece is looking at the five-year plan and knowing what we are able to do with our students for class sizes, making sure that we are able to train our, our staff or give our staff the opportunity to continue developing so that they can be the best.
Ms. Thurner, you are next.
Thank you. I think we need to look at the budget, as Ms. Stubber said, but I think we need to bring somebody in who specializes in school district-specific, because if you look at how businesses in general are run, typically you take revenue, you take your expenses, anything that's left over, you invest back into that business. School districts shouldn't work that way, they also shouldn't work at a deficit. I think that's irresponsible. School districts should have the revenue that's being brought in, and they should take the expenses, and at the end of the year, it should equal zero. Every single penny should be accounted for each and every year. So I think in order to get there, in order to improve the budgetary issues that the school district faces, we absolutely have to bring some professional in to help us with that budget, who understands and knows school district business and what that looks like. In addition, I think a strategic plan is necessary, again, with somebody who has that skill and that background, working with school districts, who understands what that strategic plan looks like. I think substitutes, that's a national problem. It's all coming down to resources and where those resources are coming from, what resources we are spending where, and whether or not it makes sense. And clearly, at this point, there's an issue with taking teachers out of other classes for substitution purposes, and that just shouldn't be happening. So we have to take a better look at the budget, we have to be transparent with the community about that budget, we have to bring in somebody who understands, again, what school districts or how school districts operate, what that budget needs to look like for each school district, and how to build ourselves out of this deficit that we are in.
Alrighty, thank you. Ms. Decuccio, I believe you're next.
Nicole had a lot of great points, and I agree with them. My biggest concern is that the morale of our teachers and our support staff, you know, they're wearing so many hats, they're, you know, covering gym, trying to cover specials so that our kids have the best education possible. Deficit spending, in my opinion, we should have a balanced budget. There's no reason that the Mars School District should have a deficit spending. Unfortunately, I also believe that deficit spending can be used as a negotiation tool for our teachers' contracts, and that's not good. You want to go into a teacher negotiation contract with a positive attitude. Having a deficit balance, having a deficit budget going into teacher contracts just sets it off, you know, it's, it's basically saying, hey, listen, we don't have the money, just so you know. Is that a tool that's used? I'm not sure. But, you know, the Mars School District, we need to have a balanced budget, bottom line.
Alright. Thank you very much for your response. Mr. Miller, you're up next.
So Mars has roughly a $55 million a year annual budget. Where is all the money going? Where can we save? What can we do to save it? Why do we have a, a deficit? These are all things that you have to delve into and find out the reason. There's no reason we can't pay subs, there's no reason we can't pay special education teachers and all the paraprofessionals. There's enough money there, we have to make it work. So does that mean bringing somebody who specializes in this field into the district to, to, to figure out where we can save money, cut it from here, put it from here? Nobody wants to be cut short on any of their subjects, any of their projects, but there is only so much money to go around. So with that being said, we need to figure out a way to have a balanced budget. We should not have a deficit, and we need, so, yes, we absolutely need to fix the problem, and I agree, we need to get somebody in here to 100%, or somebody that specializes in it to look at it. Maybe they can come up with a good idea.
Alrighty, thank you, Mr. Miller. Ms. Reiner, I think you're next.
Whenever I was at the school board meeting and we went over the budget, I remembered them saying that we were in the hole, because so many children were choosing cyber schools and charter schools, and so whenever somebody else goes to another school like that, we pay that. So we fund that child to go to a charter school. I think we need to look at our own school. I think, we think we need to improve our cyber program, and I think we also need to prepare a three-to-five-year budget, as they said. I think we also need to provide quality education for all students, so what that means is maybe investing money with some of those children for special education, dyslexia, other kind of issues, so we don't have to spend a lot of money to send them to another school. That's one of the biggest problems I think we have at Mars is, I'm sorry, you know, we don't have the resources for your child, they can be sent elsewhere, and we'll pay for them. And I think if we can get these programs here at Mars and the children in our community can all be together and learn together, I think that would be very beneficial for everyone.
Alrighty, thank you very much, Ms. Reiner. We are going to move on to question number four today, and that question is, as a candidate, what are your top three priorities when you're elected? And I believe, Ms. Thurner, you're going to start us off with this one.
Yeah, thank you. I think the top three priorities for me would be to, one, for me personally, I want to go in, I want to understand all of the issues that are present at each school board meeting that the community is bringing to the attention of the school board. I then want to take that, I want to analyze those issues, I want to do some research, and I really want to understand where the core problems are in our district. I think that's a really important thing for me, because I don't have children in this district, I don't have children at all. I work with a lot of children in various school districts around the county and other counties with my profession, but for me, I, I really need to focus on what those issues are and analyzing what those solutions can be so that we can move forward. I also think that we need to prioritize issues so that we can start chipping away at every single issue that is brought to our attention, because I know there's a lot of issues out there, and a lot of parents and the community members think their issue is the most important. So for us to be able to address the majority of those concerns, we have to start working together, they have, the boards have to start communicating in a reasonable manner to be able to chip away at each one of them. away at each one of those issues. One of the things that I really want to focus on is just mental health services for our students in in the school district. I think that's really important and it's very needed, not just in Mars but across the board. So those are my priorities.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Turner. Ms. Cuccio, you are up next.
So for me, choosing to run was actually, you know, three quite simple things that, you know, they're very basic things. Transparency is obviously one of those reasons. I feel, you know, there are many parents who have come to school board meetings that have required our school board to be more transparent, so thank you. I feel like, you know, that at least is in a better direction. Financial competence is very important to me. Goes back to having a balanced budget. Are we spending the money wisely? You know, is the survey that we done that said our school wasn't going to grow incorrect because we are growing? Are we planning for the future for that? And then my next biggest thing was just taxpayer and parent advocates, as a parent advocate, as having a child in our district, I wanted to be able to be a voice for our parents in our school district if they needed somebody to talk to, support the superintendent, and for our taxpayers, giving them the opportunity to have their say on decisions that are made at the school board level with our administration.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Cuccio. Mr. Miller, your response, sir.
My top three priorities would be, first one would be to understand the budget. Where is the money all going? Why are we always in a deficit? And how do we fix that? My second, my sec, the next thing would be to provide the needs for every child, whether you're gifted or you have special needs. We got to make sure that every child has every opportunity to grow and succeed in the way they need to grow. They absolutely need that. I can't stress that enough, and I don't know how to stress it enough. Children need what they need, and the school is a good place to provide a lot of the education, a lot of the support, a lot of the social aspects that they need to learn to grow to be an adult. We need to push vocational education. There is a great shortage of workers, blue collar workers in this country. Not saying, I'm not taking anything away from college or anything else, but in the vocational field, there is a huge shortage. And children need to know that there's other options, and they're not going to be a failure if they choose another path. There there is great opportunity to succeed outside of your traditional education.
All righty, thank you, Mr. Miller. Ms. Reiner, you're next to answer.
So when preparing for my campaign, I actually came up with five priorities. They're all very equally important, but I will choose three to speak about. My first one was quality education. Like I said, I want to make sure that we are inclusive for all. And quality education means not only education in general, but it is your mind, your body, your soul. Having enough counselors, as Jen said. We have one counselor for two schools in the elementary level. And at the elementary, there's 850 kids. They share their counselor with another school. Imagine the anxiety these kids have during this pandemic. There are a lot of issues going on. We need to take care of that. A next one is preparing for growth. Oh, my goodness, whether you like it or not, there's homes and plans coming up everywhere. So are we going to build onto our schools to prepare for all this growth coming, all these new families coming in? Where are the soccer fields going? Are we putting in more parking? Are we talking about this? The community doesn't really seem to know what's going on, and I think that's important to know so we can plan for the future of this district. And also accountability. We need to hold the board members accountable. We need to hold administration accountable. We need to hold the teachers accountable. We all have jobs and we all have things to do. We just want to make sure they're doing them right and legally, and we're checking off all the boxes.
All righty, thank you very much, Ms. Reiner. Ms. Stuber, I think you're next.
I think we can agree that many of us have this similar view of what our top three priorities are. We have the best interest of our students in mind. Having a district with quality education as well as quality sports programs and activities, that's what develops a child into a well-rounded adult. You know, we are so proud of our soccer team that has won multiple times and all of our sports that do all these great things, our activities. Well, to do that, we have to make sure we have opportunities for those kids and have that quality education. That also means making sure that the teachers feel supported, making sure that the administration has support. The next is communication, clear, transparent communication. You go to board meetings and, you know, it's great, they let you guys speak, but what happens after you speak? Let's hear those comments, let's hear those concerns, and let's get back to that and really focus on those concerns beyond the board meeting. And finally, of course, is the budget, the tax dollars, making sure that our tax dollars are valued and used in the appropriate places, especially accounting for that growth. We can't be a great school if we are not accounting for that growth.
Okay. Thank you very much. Onto our fifth question. Compared to Pine Richland School District, our AP course selection is smaller. Mars offers 13 AP classes, one of which is only offered online, compared to 22 classes offered at Pine. Do you feel this is something that the board should address? And if so, how should the board do so? Ms. Cuccio, you have 90 seconds, and your time starts now.
Absolutely. It's two words, curriculum director.
Done. All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Miller, your response.
Absolutely. If it's something that the kids need, then we got to figure out a way to provide it. Absolutely. You do, you need it. I, yes, I'm going to do a short answer here also.
All righty.
Get it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Miller. Ms. Reiner?
I heard the question was about AP classes.
Yes.
I couldn't catch the rest of the question. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. So we were just saying how we think that, or that Pine Richland has 22 AP classes compared to Mars only has 13, and we just asked if, do you feel like this is something the board should address?
Well, this is where I feel that we need to reinstate a curriculum director. We need somebody that is able to look at other school districts of our size and see where Mars is lacking. We got, Kara Eckert's no longer with us. We need someone to fill her shoes. We need somebody specifically for curriculum director so we know how we are fearing against other schools. Are our kids having the same things that these other districts are having? When they go out into college, are they going to be prepared? I think we really need to reinstate a curriculum director and someone that can also find some grants to help us with some programs. But I I think that's my answer, reinstate a curriculum director.
All righty. Thank you, Ms. Reiner. Ms. Stuber?
I absolutely think that we should be looking at AP classes. These are what put our students ahead of another student when looking at a college. It's your opportunity to be competitive. It's the opportunity to experience and really show your value. It's an easy, it's a good way to earn your credits for college, save a little money because you can jump right into some of those classes. It also allows you to, those who need to feel challenged, it gives you that opportunity. So we absolutely should be looking at and extending those.
All right, perfect. Ms. Turner?
Yeah, thank you. At the risk of sounding redundant, I am absolutely in agreement with the AP classes. I do believe that they provide additional challenges for students who need those challenges to want to stay present in classes, who want to stay present in school. I think that I've come across a lot of students who are not getting those challenges, and then they they start acting out or they get bored and then they don't do as well in school as they should. So I do think the AP classes are really important to keep. I do think that they need to be quality AP classes. I think that there needs to be some sort of system or policy in place to ensure that they are quality AP classes and not just kind of going through the motions. But they are important. They prepare kids for college, and I am definitely in agreement with them.
All righty. We're going to move on to question number six now. What do you think are the most pressing concerns facing the school district and why? Mr. Miller, I believe you're up.
I'm sorry, Max. Alls I heard was the rain.
You can't hear anything over the rain.
All right. What do you think are the most pressing concerns facing the school district and why?
The most pressing concerns and why?
Yes.
Okay.
And please speak very clearly into your microphone so that the audience can hear.
Most pressing concerns, number one would be the budget. You know, there's, there's a lot of people in the district that don't even have children in the school and they pay taxes in the school. We need to keep it balanced. We need to keep it, no deficit, and we need to keep our taxes low. Absolutely, 100%, the the budget is the number one. And then, you know, again, special education and and the AP classes and, you know, the gifted children and and all the needs of all the children, they need to have a good quality education. They need to have the resources they provided to them to be able to succeed as young adults. The schools, schools got to provide it somehow. We have a very rich, diverse community that we really, there shouldn't be no, no, no reason why any student doesn't get the education that they need. And then as far as the third thing goes, just maintaining the the best, best school that we can, the best environment for our children to to come to school, grow up in, to be able to have the social activities that they that they desire, friends. Just need to have the best school. I mean, that absolutely 100% best school is important. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Miller. Ms. Reiner, you have two minutes to answer the same question, and please speak very loudly into your microphone.
Okay. As I said a few times, I think the, our biggest challenge is providing quality education for all students while preparing for growth. Got a lot of issues. The community is growing. We are busting at the seams in the schools. Class size is increasing. If we don't have subs, they split the class, and then half the class goes into another classroom, and then half that classroom goes into another classroom. Now you have, what, about 35 kids in one classroom? Those are some of the issues we need to look at, whether we're building on to some of the buildings, whether we're going to, you know, have construction and build new buildings. This community is growing, so we need to start preparing for that. We are becoming more diverse in this community. We have to be inclusive, and I think that's, that's our biggest challenge.
All righty, thank you, Ms. Reiner. Ms. Stuber?
I am going to kind of echo what I've just heard, and we need to continue planning for growth in this community. We need to be able to support the student as a whole, and without planning for growth, we are not able to necessarily allow those students clubs or opportunities unless we start planning. We had mentioned the soccer fields. How are we building those quality teams if we are not giving them, we don't have the plan or the space to give them those opportunities? Having the mental health services, you know, planning for growth, that's huge. That's very important to make sure that you have enough staff to support every building and every student. And as this growth continues, the ratio for staff, for the support staff is only going to continue to grow, the special ed programs, too. As the community grows, just law of inevitability, the special ed programs are going to increase. Do we have the support staff? I hear all the time, we don't have enough paraprofessionals. We don't have the programs to help the students, such as the dyslexic students. So we need to be planning for all of this growth because it's only going to continue to increase the number of students that need these supports. And the subs, are we planning for the sub, for this growth? And we can't, if our classes keep growing and we're maxing out at 26, 27, 28 students, and then we've got to split a class, that poor teacher has no chance of providing a quality education for our students, or they're losing, the students are losing their specials times, which not only is not allowing the teachers to do planning of those lessons, but it's also not giving the child an opportunity to grow as a whole.
All right. Thank you very much for your response. All right. Ms. Turner, your response is next. You have two minutes.
Can you guys still hear us out there? Because I cannot hear anybody up here.
No, I can't.
Wonderful. So I think the, I think everybody has maybe mentioned the budget. I think that is the top priority, the top concern, the top challenge, because everything else trickles down and is about resources in our community, right? So if we can't figure out the budget first, we can't figure out the capacity issue, we can't figure out the substitution issue, we can't figure out the teachers and the shortages of the teaching staff that we have, we can't figure any of that out until we figure out where those resources are and where we can allot those resources. So the budget has to be the first and foremost priority, and I think that's the biggest challenge because, again, we have to go back and we have to look at what has been cut, what has been spent, and where we're moving forward. And I think we have to get that professional in and that expertise dealing with school districts to understand where we can go forward and where those resources can be pulled and where maybe we can make some cuts to allot resources to these very pressing concerns, I would say, that are facing our district. So that's first and foremost. I think the secondary part of that is the capacity in the schools and where is that capacity going to go or what, what is that going to look like moving forward? I think in the past, the board and the district as a whole has been very reactionary and not proactive. So I think that that mindset needs to change so that we are proactive and we are not just reacting to things as they are happening because that gets you nowhere. So the planning aspect needs to happen. And thirdly, I think the division with the board and the community, that needs to be rectified, and it needs to be rectified quickly because, again, there's that huge wedge occurring and the productivity of the board is just going to continue to be stunted.
Thank you very much, Ms. Turner. Ms. Cuccio, you have two minutes for your response.
So with the pandemic, there's got to be an increase in our special ed, right? I mean, how many more students are going to have IEPs in our school from, you know, either being out of the school or, you know, we just don't know. What is the repercussions of the pandemic? You know, I'm assuming the board is hopefully having those discussions behind closed doors, but are we planning for, even as the kids get older in seventh grade, eighth grade, are they going to need the extra help? Do we need to have more resources there? So that's a huge concern. If I was sitting on the board today, I would be asking, you know, what are, what are we seeing? What does our future look like for these kids to make sure that they're not falling behind from this pandemic? Planning for growth is something that's also, I feel is very important. Like I said, there was a survey that was done. That survey said that we were down, that we were decreasing. That's not true. Our numbers are increasing. So does another survey need to be done to see where we stand over the next 10 years so that we can plan for the future? But the reality is, is that we can't plan for the future with the deficit budget. It's not possible. You cannot plan for your future if you are deficit spending. Bottom line.
Okay. Thank you very much for your response. We are moving on to our seventh question of the night, and Ms. Reiner, you will have the first response for this one. Our most recent audit in 2018 from the PA Department of Special Education has found repetitive deficiencies in many areas. To date, we are still under corrective action and our corrective action plan has been extended. How do you plan on ensuring that resources are spent to help us climb out of our corrective action status? How do you think we can solve this problem and ensure that our children get all that they need? You have 90 seconds to respond to this question. Ms. Reiner, your timer starts now.
I remember I was actually here. Um, I remember I was actually here when the state was here. And we were in this room and they were going over all the deficits that Mars had. It was very eye-opening. I remember then Dr. McMahon developing this MTSS program, and it sounded great. And we started it, but then we kind of lost that MTSS, which is called, it's a multi-tiered system support. And a lot of, to be effective, a lot of, um, schools have it K through 12. We were only having it in the, like, the primary ages, the early education era. So they were trying, they had a lot to fix. And then Travis Minard came in and had a lot to fix, and with a very limited budget. We do have a numerous amount of kids with an IEP or a 504 that do need special help or special education resources. So I'm happy that we got the SRF funds, and how we're gonna use those SRF funds is through tutoring, through reading. They have a reading program in the elementary school and in the middle school, they offered mathematical programs to help kids catch up from what they lost during COVID, so I commend the district on that. But we still have a long way to go with our special education.
Alrighty, thank you, Ms. Reiner. Ms. Stuber, you're next.
Great. So, special ed, yeah, corrective action is a lot, and I think that while I have seen improvement in the district, we still have a long way to go. You know, you look at the recently published plan, the comprehensive plan, and it talks about MS, MTSS, the multi-tiered system, which is great, but it definitely still is not being used with fidelity. There is some lack of late identification for students with disabilities. So we really need to be looking at what interventions and how fast we're placing interventions. I agree, the SRF fund, using that for tutoring is fantastic. The comprehensive plan offers the multi-sensory approach, which is big for students who have reading disabilities. However, the plan currently does not talk about who exactly will be using this, and how it would be best utilized. By using this and effectively training, starting at the special ed teachers and branching out to the regular ed teachers could really cut down on some of that. Also, allowing those special ed teachers trainings. Part of that action plan is making sure that the IEPs are written well and followed. And right now, because we don't have subs, we don't get trainings.
Okay. Thank you very much for your response. Ms. Thurner, you're up next, there are 90 seconds on the clock.
Thank you. Um, you know, as an attorney, I think it's really important to understand the IEP laws and the laws that regulate the special needs programs and the, you know, processes that have to be put in place within the school districts. So I, I believe that I would be able to come in and analyze the comprehensive plan, understand what those laws are that need to be applied to that, and make sure that we're following those laws and the regulations that are associated with that. So I think that's first and foremost. If, if that is in fact what's happening, and the school district is following and, and falling into place with what they need to comply with as far as those regulations, then I think, secondly, we need to figure out, like Ms. Stuber stated, you know, making sure that those IEPs are written appropriately and written well. I've seen a lot of children who have IEP plans, and those plans are poorly written. Parents get those, parents don't understand them, they go to these meetings for the IEPs, they ask questions. It's kind of, it's a very frustrating process for parents. So I agree, I think training is very, very important, and I also think there needs to be some sort of education process with parents as well to understand that process. I get a lot of calls about that, a lot of questions about the IEP process, and it's very confusing, so I think that's a good way to use those resources.
Alrighty, thank you very much. Ms. DiCuccio?
So I'm a parent with a child who is in special education who also has an IEP. I will say that there are many parents before me who fought hard for their children that have made my process much smoother. So I wanna say thank you to those parents, their blood, sweat, and tears, literally. You know, my process for Delaney's IEP has been very smooth. I will say, I think having Travis in play is very key. I believe, I have confidence in him, I trust that he is running our IEP program. I will say that, I believe that our, everybody is wearing multiple hats and they're trying to do multiple jobs, so I feel like there are some things that probably likely get, that slip through the crack, not intentionally. I think that Mars is trying, I think that they're on the right path. It's, without actually being in closed-door sessions and actually listening to those meetings, it's really hard as a parent in the district who has a child with an IEP to, you know, to just say, "We need to do X, Y, and Z," without actually being in those closed-door sessions with Dr. Gross. But I believe that Dr. Gross is capable of leading the school and in this area. And like I said, I have had nothing but a positive experience with my family and my daughter in the district who has an IEP.
Thank you very much, Ms. DiCuccio. Mr. Miller, you are up next, and you have 90 seconds.
I am in no way an expert on this subject, I'm not going to pretend that I am. My, one of my daughters, we tried to get an IEP for her a few years back. She went, she saw a psychologist and this and that, it didn't work out for her. Turns out, she, you know, she, she grew out of the struggle she was having, and she, she's fine now. So what the other lady said here, sounds, sounds like a great idea. That's something that I would love to learn more about. Listen to the people that, that know about the subject a lot more than me, and find out, you know, base that and, and, be able to, to find an answer for the question, because, you know, right now, I just, I'm, I do not have an answer for it that's better than what I gave. Thank you.
Alrighty, thank you, Mr. Miller. Alright, we're gonna move on to our eighth question of the night, and that is that classroom size has been a hot topic in the Mars Area School District recently. So that's why we were asking you today, what is your preferable maximum number of students per class that you feel is acceptable? And Ms. Stuber, you're gonna be first to answer this one.
Could you repeat that? I could not, I'm sorry, I could not understand, hear you correctly.
Oh, of course. What do you feel is the maximum number of students per class that you feel is acceptable?
Thank you.
And you will have 60 seconds to answer.
This is me first, okay.
Sorry.
Sorry.
That was.
Alright, that's fine. Um, I think it's different for every level. I think at kindergarten, to be a successful kindergarten teacher, 15 to 20 is a lot. They're still learning to learn. They need to learn how to come into a classroom, how to sit at the desk, how to manage their bodies. There's so much to that. You know, elementary school, it's, they're a little more independent, but they still need some of that hand-holding. 20, 22, probably a good number. High school, I think that it depends on the topic. A general class, 20, 25, is a little different, they're independent. But when you're getting into an AP class where there is a lot more content-based, you want that to be smaller. You wanna be able to have conversations and allow every student an opportunity, so the smaller class sizes are important in that area.
Alrighty, perfect. Ms. Thurner, you're next.
Yeah, thank you. I would agree. I think it's gonna be dependent on the age of the, you know, the, the grade, and whether or not you do have little ones that you're trying to kind of control and keep that attention span under control on any given day, or if you're dealing with AP students in high school. I mean, it's really dependent on that. If you do have those specialized classes, I, I agree, I think they need to be smaller. But I by no means can even guess what an appropriate size on a classroom is. I'm just not in that world, so I'm eager to learn about that, and if that is an issue within our district, I would venture to guess it again comes down to resources and being able to figure out how to spend those resources to ensure that our class sizes are appropriate. So again, if that's an issue in our district, we need to address it and we need to figure out a solution.
Alrighty, perfect, thank you. Ms. DiCuccio?
So I don't really have a magic number. I wish I could wave it on and say, "Hey, it's 25," that would be easy, right? But I definitely think that, you know, a lot of families move here for small class sizes, right? I mean, you know, that's one of the reasons why I moved to Mars, because Butler was consolidating all of their schools, so it was, you know, it was important for us to move, you know, move to a school district where class sizes were small. I think in the elementary and primary center, I think, you know, 20 is, is a lot. I think when you're asking these teachers to wear multiple hats and do multiple jobs without aides in their classroom, I think it's very hard for them, you know, to give the students all the attention that they need. At upper level, it's really hard for me to just say what that magic number is. 20 to 25 students to me seems reasonable. And like I said, parents move to our school for smaller class sizes. That more one-on-one that they get with the teacher, that's very difficult for our teachers today when we're asking them to do multiple, do multiple jobs.
Alrighty, Mr. Miller?
I think the, the age and this particular subject would be the driving force for the proper answer on this. Obviously, the younger children, a smaller class size would benefit that more so than a high school student. You know, younger students need to learn how to sit down and more attention to the teacher when, when she can, you know, she or her can give better detail to each individual child. Special needs kids obviously need to have more hands-on and less people. So the answer's not just one number's gonna be, solve it, you know, every class is different, every age group's different. So in high school, 22, 23, that's probably okay, but, you know, first grade kindergarten, 10, 15 would probably be the top number.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Miller. Ms. Reiner?
Um, I agree with Mr. Miller in that there's not one number that we can say there is no magic number. You have to look at the age level of the students, the grade, the level of need of each student. And I'd like to ask the teachers, what do you think is an appropriate size for your classroom? What are you teaching? How long, is it effective? I would like to get data from the teachers, because I'm not a teacher, I don't know what it's like in the classroom. So let's ask the experts and see what they tell us, and then see if it's manageable for the amount of space that we have.
Okay. Thank you very much for your response. We are going to move on to the next question. A study by Stanford University found that girls surpassed boys on reading and writing in almost every US school district, regardless of local wealth or racial makeup. In third grade, female students outperform boys by roughly half a grade level in language arts. By the end of eighth grade, girls are almost a full grade level ahead of boys. On the flip side, gender achievement gaps in grades three through eight in math have narrowed significantly over the last decade. In Mars School District, only four of our 18 English teachers in the middle and high school are men. Given this information, what would you do as a board member to ensure that boys at Mars do not fall behind girls in language arts? Ms. Thurner, you have the first response for this question, and you have 90 seconds on the clock. Your time starts now.
That's a very interesting question and interesting statistic. I did not know that. So I think if that is an issue in our school district, then we need to know that that's an issue, right? So I think we need to figure out, you know, a way to monitor that or a way to study that to see if that is actually happening. If it is, then, you know, maybe there needs to be, we can look at other school districts, other studies that are out there that might be addressing those issues, to see what is implemented in each classroom to ensure that, that gender difference, if you will, is not occurring so that, you know, our, our boys in our school district aren't falling behind. But I think first to address that issue, you have to have kind of like a study or a survey done with each teacher classroom that would shed light on whether or not that's actually occurring, and then kind of go from there.
Alrighty, perfect. Ms. DiCuccio?
Lauren, can you, can you reread the question?
Of?
Yes, thank you. A study by Stanford University found that girls surpassed boys on reading and writing in almost every US school district, regardless of local wealth or racial makeup. In third grade, female students outperform boys by roughly half a grade level in language arts.
Is that in our school?
No, a Stanford University study.
Okay.
Yep. By the end of eighth grade, girls are almost a full grade ahead. On the flip side, gender achievement gaps in grades three through eight in math have narrowed significantly over the last decade. In Mars School District, only four of our 18 English teachers in middle and high school are men.
Are what?
Are men.
Okay.
Male. Given this information, what would you do as a board member to ensure that boys at Mars do not fall behind girls in language arts?
So I think the very first thing I would wanna know is, how do our boys do, right? How, how does it affect our children in our local school district? Because if it doesn't affect our kids, and, you know, you can do that through testing, if we're not seeing that, then to me, it's really a non-issue. However, if it is an issue, then it definitely would need to be addressed. My thought process is most boys are usually held later than girls, so for that study, you know, are there some schools where maybe they all go at the same age? I'm not sure. I just know that, you know, most parents typically hold their kids back a year, especially for males. So I personally, it's a, I personally never have heard of that study, I've never heard of that statistic, especially coming from a little girl who struggles in school, so it's kind of a shock to me. She's usually behind everybody in her class, so I think if it was an issue in Mars School District, it would definitely be something that would need to be addressed.
Uh, Mr. Miller?
Well, to start, I think every married man would agree with me that women are smarter than men, they're always right. But besides that, having two daughters, I know that they're incredibly smart. They, uh, girls have a natural tendency to pick up on everything that they do. It's, uh, it's actually very inspiring. But going back to my, my, my own experiences in school, I thrived when teachers intrigued me and, and inspired me. When, uh, you know, boys have a lot of energy, especially adolescents. They got it, they, they need to run, they need to move around. So the teachers that were fun and, and active, I, I did really well in their classes. But if it was just somebody just reading something out of a book, writing something on the chalkboard, I didn't do good, so, you know, I, I think if there's boys starting to fall behind, which I don't think's happening in our school, but, you know, maybe change teaching tactic. I'm not a teacher, I don't know if that's, that's possible or not, but I, I do know when you're interested, you're gonna learn it, whether you like the subject or not.
Alrighty, thank you, Mr. Miller. Ms. Reiner?
Um, I also agree, it's a very interesting statistic, but we don't know if that's happening here at Mars, so I think until we would know that was happening, then we would need to take a look at that. You know, maybe the different ways that the different teachers teach, are they, are boys more visual learners where girls aren't? Do girls mature faster than boys? All this would take into effect to see the different teaching methods of the male teacher versus the female teacher. And once we find out that, and once we get statistics of Mars, then I think we would see if we need to, if this would be a concern of ours.
Okay, perfect. Ms. Stuber?
So I feel like I need to say this. Yes, I am a teacher. My background is special ed, deaf ed. I recently have really done a lot of reading instruction certification for myself. But please don't think that that is my driving reason, or that I'm gonna use this expertise to tell you how to fix the district. What I'm gonna say is that we should be asking our teachers to analyze their data. Are they looking at their PSSA data? Are they looking at their curriculum assessments? Are they, what other assessments are we using in the district to see if this is a trend? We can't really speak about a trend if we don't know it's a trend. Also, looking at what incentive are we giving the boys to engage in English language arts? You know, it's much like the girls, that big push a couple years ago, that girls had to get into sciences, that more boys were into couple of years ago, that girls had to get into sciences, that more boys were into science. I think you need to do the same thing. Perhaps we talk to those four ELA male teachers and say, what kind of program? What instilled that fire under you for ELA? How can we channel that into a program?
Alrighty, thank you very much. We're going to be moving on to our 10th question tonight, and that is for Ms. Cuccio. Ms. Cuccio, given that Mars has not sent a student to an Ivy League school for at least five years, if not longer, what would you do as a board member to encourage teachers and staff to help students get into a highly selective school? And you have 60 seconds.
So I think that the gifted program, which you both are members of, right? I think that there should be more focus on the gifted program, especially at the younger kids' age, and identifying who those students are. And, you know, want to identify a student in the gifted program. I am not currently on the school board, but I do know that there are processes in place if a child is gifted. It's my understanding that if this is identified at a young age, there are steps, but there's also testing, and there's a certain threshold. So if you don't meet that threshold, you know, then you're kind of just like, no, you're not in the program. So I would want to look at that. Quite frankly, it's one of those things where, for me personally, to say I have an answer to this question, I do not. But I do know that at the, I feel like at the gifted level, from, just from parents whose students are in the gifted program, or are on that cusp, you know, one point away, you know, basically says, no, you're not allowed. So I, sorry. Can I finish?
Yeah.
So I, if, if it's, the next thing is a curriculum director. I mean, we need a curriculum director to help with that, and also the college courses, we need to look into that. So I don't have the exact answer that you may be looking for. However, I do know that once I am on the board, I will look into it.
Alrighty, Mr. Miller, you're next.
Well, from what I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, if you want to take college credits over the summer, only a certain few apply. You can only take so many, correct? Like, if you wanted to work day and night and take college courses and get those credits applied, only a certain few's gonna, gonna actually apply and help you out. So I don't know why there's that rule. If you, if you want to work hard, and you want to excel, and you want to take as many college credits as you can, then, then it should be allowed. There should not be a, a, a role stopping you from exceeding yourself. And, and if, you know, you're in high school and you, you want to take as many credits as you can, be allowed. There, it just, that blows my mind that they would hold back somebody as bright as somebody who has a chance to get into Ivy League school, that just because, I don't even know the reason why they, they only let you take so many credits.
Alrighty, well, thank you. Ms. Reiner?
So actually, actually, I was speaking to a mother outside of Centennial School who stopped me, and her daughter no longer goes to Mars. And she said, Leanne, I don't understand. My daughter is so intelligent. Her teacher said she was gifted. Everybody's saying she was gifted. However, when they did the benchmark, she was, just didn't quite make it. And so, guess what? She goes to another school now, where they can challenge her and provide more than what Mars can. It's very disappointing to hear. We have a lot of work to do on our special education side, but we also have a lot of work to do with the gifted children. We need to encourage them. We need to push them, you know, let them get their fullest potential. And I'm really not sure that we're doing that. So that's something we do need to work on.
Alrighty, Ms. Stuber?
So I think that I'm not gonna pretend that I know what the gifted program looks like. Both of my kids are on IEPs as well. I have a neighbor who talks about gifted program, but I'm not sure that it truly allows the kid to develop their skills. I think that there's room for opportunity for us to look at the community and make partnerships. What a great chance to offer after-school clubs with partnerships that would allow those kids, gifted means that you have a variety of talents. How can we instill those talents if we don't have programs for them? I also think, as Ms. Cuccio said, it's really important that we have a curriculum director, who's in charge of that curriculum, who's overseeing right now what that looks like, and ensuring that it is quality.
Oh, okay, perfect. Ms. Thurner, I believe you're up next.
Thank you. I think if, if that's the goal, to continue to have students who graduate and go on to Ivy League schools, perhaps we need to look at what those Ivy League schools require, and what, what qualifications from a student that they look for, to ensure that we have that in our school district. And we need to ensure that our, back to the kind of the AP classes, that they are quality classes, that they're challenging our students, that our students aren't getting bored with the education that they're receiving. Because if they're bored, they're not gonna want to continue to push themselves to move forward. So I agree with the curriculum director. Actually, that's something that Ms. Cuccio and I have discussed in the past. We do believe that's something that's important in this district, to ensure that our curriculum is on track, that our curriculum is challenging for the students who need that challenge. So I think that's, that's the solution.
Okay. Thank you very much. We are going to move on to our final question. What do you think you bring to the table that sets you apart from all of the other candidates? You have 90 seconds to respond, and Mr. Miller, you have first response.
Well, obviously, question and answer's not my expertise or forte. But I, I, I have a lot to offer that's different from everybody else here. I've owned my own business for 15 years. I, I schedule, I bid, I budget, I, I lead, and I can do, I do all that. So my, my perspective is gonna be a little bit different than somebody else's. There's nine people on the school board. There's, should be a broad range of people and personalities on the school board. You know, I'm, I don't live in a neighborhood. I have a, you know, we have a farm. So I'm gonna bring representation to, you know, large tract landowners, people that have been in the area for a long time. And I can represent you like that. I am going to work hard, harder than anybody, because that's all I really know how to do. I'm a worker. So anything that I don't know, I will, I will study and research and, and get to know it, so I can represent you, everybody, with the best of my ability.
Alrighty, thank you very much. Ms. Reiner?
So what I bring is, whenever we moved here in 2016, my first thing was to join the PTO. I wanted to get involved. I wanted to know the teachers, the schools, the programs. In doing that, we have had many successful fundraisers, fundraisers, and we supplied the primary center with new playground equipment, iPads for the children, increased technology for them, fun events, field trips. I bring new ideas. It was my idea to be the mascot for March for Mars. Think outside the box. What, what, these students have gone through so much these last two years. What can we do to make things different for them, to make them excited to go to school, to have programs for them? Leadership skills is what I bring. Budgeting, from the PTO, we have to budget. Effective communication. I collaborate with the administration, with the staff, with the parents, with the students. I see them. I see how excited they are in the schools. My heart is in this, and I've been dedicated since day one, and to make a change in this district for the better, and to collaborate as a community, and be inclusive to all children.
Thank you, Ms. Reiner. Ms. Stuber, you are up next.
Okay. Well, I feel I'm pretty rounded as an adult. I have obviously been a teacher. I have sold mortgages. I have co-founded a charity walk here in Pittsburgh for years for Pre-Acclamia. I have an understanding on how to support our great administration that's already in place. I have family roots in Mars. And most importantly, I have had to learn how to effectively work with tough parents. I was our IEP coordinator at my school for multiple years, and having tough conversations with school district administrators, school parents upset. I am able to be an active listener to those parents, and reassure them, and help them find a solution. And I think that is a great asset to the board.
Alrighty, thank you very much. Ms. Thurner, you are next.
Yeah, thank you. Like I said before in our intro, you know, I think my legal background and training brings a different perspective to the board, and a different skill set and quality that otherwise isn't there. I mean, the school board does have a solicitor, but I think it's important to have somebody else who, you know, knows and understands those laws, and can hear the issues, and ensure that the board is acting appropriately based on the laws that exist, right? That's, that's what governs us. So I, I think that's something that's really important for me, to set me apart from everybody else. In addition, I do work with children across all of the school districts in our county, as well as other counties. I see what the students struggle with. I see what they need in the schools when they're dealing with, you know, difficult home lives. So I think that gives me another perspective, that I can kind of look at Mars School District and say, hey, what do our kids need? I think mental health services, like I said, is a big thing that needs to be implemented and explored. I, I think I mentioned it before too, I had a dispute resolution training when, or specialty when I was in law school. I negotiate, and I speak to people every day, trying to resolve issues in my career. So I think that's really important when dealing with each other on the board. You know, there's nine of us. There's going to be difference of opinions. It's important to be reasonable and be able to communicate.
Alrighty, thank you very much. Ms. Cuccio, you're up.
So I, my past career, I feel like, and my experience with the Humane Society is what separates me probably, although Nicole has, has been on boards. You know, at the Humane Society, I literally had to turn that place upside down, and I had a very short time to do it. We were broke. I literally had $10,000, and it did not cover payroll my first day, and I knew that. And I still took the job. So it was a very challenging time for me. I work really well under pressure. My husband says, you know, if it's the toughest job, I know my wife's gonna step up to the plate. I, you know, day one, I understand financials. I know how to read financial statements. Those, you know, those are things that I had to do at the Humane Society. My biggest also is, you know, strategic planning for a future. That's my biggest concern. Day one, if I'm elected, it will be, where are we at in five years? Where are we at in 10 years? Because that future is important to our kids, but also our, our children's children. So, and I think all of these candidates bring something to the table.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Cuccio, for your response. Alright. That is all the time we have for candidate questions tonight. We appreciate all the participating community members and candidates, and hope you're ready to make informed decisions on Election Day this year. We would like to remind the audience members that polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on November 2nd, and the Adams Township polling locations are the Adams Ridge Clubhouse and the Adams Township Building.
All donations collected tonight will go to Mars High School and Richmond Club to encourage more community events like this one, and for participation in academic events. Donation boxes will be placed on the sides of the auditorium exit doors, and QR codes have been placed on the walls of the auditorium for electronic donations.
We would like to thank the candidates for their excitement to participate in this event, the community for allowing this event to be successful, and our co-coordinator, Kylie, and our supervisor here tonight, Mr. Black, for both of their support. Also, please remember that the recording of this event will be airing on the Neighborhood Channel, Channel 100, thanks to Armstrong. We hope you found this event helpful, and appreciate your attendance and enthusiasm. Have a great night, everyone.
From high school sports to community events and beyond, you can find all of your favorite local shows on the Armstrong Neighborhood Channel.
Hi, I'm Tricia from the Butler Buzz. You can watch my show or other local programming like Up for Adoption, or Hunting Nostalgia, only on the Armstrong Neighborhood Channel.
Check us out right now on Channel 100, or search Armstrong Neighborhood Channel on YouTube for playlists and much more. Spirit, town pride, community. This is the Armstrong Neighborhood Channel.